Write your stuff. No, I don't.
Thanks, me.
No, I don't.
Okay.
All to order the, can we get a whole meeting for the village of Roscoe for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025? We can have a roll call.
Babcock.
Here.
Malco.
Here.
Petty. Aaron Clark.
Here.
Sima.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Gus Assens. Here.
Item one is approval of the minutes, motion to approve the minutes in the meeting of the committee of the whole for March 18th, 2025.
I'll move.
Okay. By Justin Fox, again by Justin Wright. Any changes, additional instructions? Henry Murray, may I have a roll call?
Clark.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Sima.
Yes.
Malco.
Yes.
Petty. Yes. Babcock.
Yes.
Public comments, anybody who wishes to speak, public comments.
Make a request for public comment. Can you add everybody that spokes notes to the committee of the whole? Where they don't have to repeat themselves.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if you have a public comment, anybody who wishes to speak or just the many. You spoke previously, that's so noted, we will add it in there, you can absolutely speak again. However, just realize that we'll be adding your comments into the committee record. From the village board. So, wish to speak, just raise your hand, at the same thing, identify yourself, explain your name.
O H L W I N E. Does the comment have to be germane to what we've talked about so far or not?
No, just.
I've always been concerned about people needing food, things of that nature, is there any reason the village of Roscoe could not decide? I'd be happy to follow, I have a farmer flower, rhododil, et cetera, where you could put in a community garden where people could help themselves as opposed to just going to the pantry and asking for handouts. So that's, that's a comment I have, I just would just ask if you might consider that.
Maybe. Oh, sir. I invite you to attend our board meeting on April 15th, where we are going to have a presentation from the Roscoe Garden Club. And they're going to tell us lots of things about what they're doing and an initiative we have started. They also have a program, just as what you're speaking about. So I'd like to see if perhaps you could coordinate your desire and what they are doing. Okay?
Any else who wishes to have comments? I.
Ryan Haven, H E A V I N. I'm also a resident, sharing, Remyton Creek. I moved to Roscoe 15 years ago to get away from the city of Rockford, decided to come up here to raise my family. Because it's a safe environment, quiet neighborhood, I have three children, I live in one of the cul-de-sacs there in Remyton Creek. I'm gonna reiterate some of the same things, I'll be quick, I'm sorry, but I just feel that it's important that this many residents of the community come up here and speak because it's important. Just the fact that, again, I don't have an issue with a single house being out there, I think it's great to have that big piece of land like that, build a house out there, do what you need to do, but add many more homes in a one-way subdivision with the only road that our kids and our wives and everyone else walk dogs. It's just not safe, I'm worried about the life sake, quality of life for the residents of the neighborhood and I don't really have a concern now when I let my 10-year-old go ride his bike in the neighborhood, or my daughter who walks, or walker dog, my wife walking at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning in the neighborhood, but with all that extra traffic and everything else, I would have a serious concern with just allowing that much more traffic into the neighborhood, so I just wanted to reiterate that.
And what have you, I, I something different or about the?
About that.
We'll have a little time to present. Anybody else for the comment?
I just wanted to add to the notes that I sent out, there's some additional information in there. Again, Sean McCarron. And specifically, I just wanted to add that, again, we're in favor, you know, we welcome new neighbors, however, a single-family home, that's, that's one thing. But we would like to see it, you know, on a smaller parcel of land, you know, carve out that niche at the end of the street, have a deed restriction, so that it's actually part of our neighborhood, because again, all those properties that is in that exhibit are part of those deed restrictions. Now that, I don't think we'd have any issue with, then we'd be happy to have that 40th neighbor, but have somebody that's just coming through there that's acts like they're a part of the neighborhood but isn't, and the restrictions that are there, as well as the concern that, you know, ever forbid, maybe 10, 15, 20 years, the property gets sold and somebody else wants to subdivide it. And now we have an issue where there are some other neighborhoods in the village or just outside of the village where one neighborhood is connected to another one and they don't match, and I think that's what we all are concerned about, to want to protect what we have, want to keep it safe. And that's all I can say, so appreciate it, thank you for your volunteering to be here today.
You know, so the wise will have a chance to speak at the end of the meeting as well, we'll have another public comment section. The whole business, I go over two, discussion, recommendation of annexing a parcel located at 92 XX, and Justice Sign Jet, Sheringham Drive, pin number 08111013, in the village of Roscoe, and designated zoning of such parcel as rural estates, single-family rural, or RE, single-family real estate residential district. I believe the train for applicants are, is here. You can reach yourself, then you can.
Evening, Casey Chadwick, on behalf of the applicant. I am, obviously, I'm here to ask for you to approve this, the zoning Board of Appeals considered our proposal. At that time, we were looking at R1. After that hearing, we were listening to the comments that were from the public, and I had a conversation with Mr. Poligus, and it was discussed that we would be amenable to revising that to rural residential, rural estates residential, which is a less dense. So that, to try to alleviate some of those concerns, so it's the lesser density. One of the things I want to note is that if the annexation were not approved, this property sits between county, medium density residential, and then the village of Roscoe, R1 district, which is the Sheringham Estates. So the county has their long range plan as actually medium density for this parcel, so for the homeowners here to alleviate their concerns, this is actually a better zoning classification than that medium does density residential if it was to go to the county. We're, we are only looking at, just the twigs are going to build one home, so some of the concerns about deed restrictions, and there's a, there's conversations about deed restrictions, which is actually a misnomer, misnomer, it's actually covenants, conditions, and restrictions. You don't put deed restrictions on deeds, those are not favored in the law. But a covenant's conditions and restrictions would be part of a planning process for a whole subdivision. We're not planning a whole subdivision, we're not before you to plan a whole subdivision. We're here to ask for annexation to be brought into the village of Roscoe so that the twigs can build there. So some of those concerns about traffic or subdivision, maybe a developer, not the twigs, later on would consider that, but that would be not before you today. And those things, traffic, access, sidewalks, all of those things would be part of a plat, a subdivision that obviously would have more time and it would be fully planned out, which is not what we're here to do. So the. Sure that I. Would also, there were some concerns about whether or not we could just add this one lot to the current existing subdivision, and that's not really realistic. In order to add property to an existing homeowners association, you cannot do that without 100% approval of all of the lot owners. And they're, and it's just a very cumbersome task to do that legally, and again, we're not looking at a subdivision, so that's, it's just not really necessary right now. The building permit will go through your permitting process or be planning, so you'll be able to approve what the property looks like, what the access looks like, what the home looks like, all of those things. Think that I've addressed everything, that all the public comments. But if there's anything else that any of, any of you have questions about.
Question, part of it is still primary legal control?
Oh yes, that's, that is part of the request, is part of the annexation, is that we're asking for the existing agricultural use to be maintained. So they're gonna, you know, carve out an area for their home, but the rest of that will be the the area that is being used currently for agriculture, we'd ask for that used to be allowed to continue in the annexation agreement.
So to be clear, this R1 classification is to allow one and one home only?
We are only going to seek a building permit for the one, I mean, what, that's not what's before you right now, is the building permit for one home, but yes, the developer here, the twigs, they just want to develop it for their one, single-family home on the entire six, they're buying the entire 66 acres, and they will, they're planning to build one home.
So we'll note too, I think you mentioned this, but this is not platted currently, so starting annexation would be bringing, it's actually redrawing the village's board boundary, you know, around this property to bring this into village limits. If there is any sort of, really any sort of development other than just the house, the driveway, this will have come back before the board for a plat, so if you replatted, and that's when this board says, yay, may, yes, we're allowed a plat, no, we're not going to, that's when, you know, if there were roads, if there are any accessways, I don't think there are right now. I'm intended. But that, that's what that process would be like, that would come and you have that full actual review, the actual, we require all of our studies that require that Brandon could be looking at, or Elias looking at, Elias, Evan looking at. But that's when that comes, probably. Process, so this is just the drawing the boundary around the village of Roscoe. And then zoning the actual property, I think a comment from somebody out here was that originally it was R1, like Casey said, or Mr. Chadwick said, this is a more restrictive zoning, so they, they did listen to your comments, and they came back to us, talked to us and said, okay, we hear their concerns, we'll do a more restrictive zoning. I do have it up there, the minimum sign here, are you seriously RE versus? Thank you, Brandon. RE versus the R1. Um, so again, this is where our, so our minimum, you know, minimum lot size, 22,000 square feet versus 9,000 square feet, minimum frontage, 110 versus 75, you know, depth, lot coverages, so this really does show that there's, it's a lot, it's for a large estate, essentially, right, for a large property with a house. So that was the request coming back here, so this would be zoned as I RE, I had to comply with all the rules of the RE zoning versus the R1 zoning, which I know there's a lot of concerns about. That was something that came back after that CBA here. Obviously, four questions, comments?
Several. First of all, switching to RE, does this need to go back to BPA to?
It just, no, this is a more restrictive standard.
Again.
So does not, you know, the hearing was.
Hold it on an R1.
Correct, yeah, so this is more.
Hold it on an RE.
Yeah. If it was going to like RM, so a more, or less restrictive, or more than density, it would have to be republished, reheared, so this is actually less, or more restrictive, I should say, so that's.
You mentioned the word cumbersome of in reaching out to those 39, 38 homes. What's the process of getting those folks, are you guys in an HOA or HO?
No. And I'll, I don't, there's a one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's the subdivision one?
Yeah.
Okay, and that would be cumbersome to reach out to them, how or why?
The process to add another property to a subdivision is actually very legally cumbersome, because you need 100% approval, you have to do a title search for all of the units. I mean, you just, I, I do a lot of development work, I pretty much never recommend somebody to add on to an existing subdivision, because it's easier just to start another subdivision with its own set of rules, you can mirror whatever rules are around you, but it usually doesn't make sense to add on, because you oftentimes need not only all of the unit owner approvals, but also you often need mortgage lender, you have to send notice to all of them that you're adding to it and, and different, so it just, it doesn't really make sense, there's, and there's not really a need to do it for one home. You know, right now, at this point, we, if there was a developer later on that will, wanted to develop a subdivision there, they would likely want to use and put in covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and, and things like that to make the whole, the subdivision, you know, consistent and.
There's also some mention about the county, you said medium density. As the county, right, we don't, I don't know if you can answer this, or someone's checked, has the county mentioned anything if they've considered that medium density, that they considered another road? County road?
I mean, obviously, there's, their plat of subdivision process would be similar to, it's a little bit less restrictive than obviously, you know, municipalities, but they, they go through a similar planning process where they would consider traffic and roads and all other things, but yeah.
So the county, and this, Joe, I don't know, that be the, that be one of our roads if we're annexing this in? Or county road?
Where would it be, I mean, I guess, we don't know where there's, where there would be a road, if it's kind of connecting to ours, or if it's our jurisdiction, it would likely be ours if they were going to come in to a subdivision plat, or road in there. I don't know, that's your question?
Yeah, just if we're gonna, if we're considering pulling all that in, there's only one road. And I'm just wondering, if the county has, if they've already considered that a medium density, if they consider a road, another road, that seems to be one of the big concerns.
Well, there's no, I mean, there's not any roads planned right now, it's a subdivision, and it's not, it's not a subdivision, it's a, it's a 60-acre property right now, so there's no, there's no roads planned. I think what, I think what she's referring to is that in, in our long-range plan, our language plan, the county's language plan, this area is, are sort of designated as medium density, ours as well as the county's. So it's not that it's, they're not so in that way, it's not that it's set that way, but in their long-range planning, and this is actually in between sort of two subdivisions right now. That's, I think that's what she was referring to.
It's, it's just consistent with the zoning of the area, the property to the north is all medium density residential.
What's the legal ramifications or anything, if that was just, if they wanted to put a house on six acres, it'd be done for 60 acres instead of the six-acre home that they want, is there anything that stipulates? You know, there is just space as it is, and we just stipulate one home, six acres.
I know, it's my question, I guess, but it's, I mean, it's gonna be, it's.
So, yeah.
Because, can we just zone the, the section that they want to build up, and leave the rest as a full group?
Or leave it under the.
Jurisdiction, yeah.
Um, if they came, and he's had requests, I suppose, I mean, you don't have to ask him anything. I suppose it's up to the applicants if they want to divide it, they're gonna have to subdivide it, I guess, at that point.
Why bring it up?
Yeah, at that point, they would have to subdivide it, to make it a smaller parcel.
Right.
Wouldn't it be better for us to have that control? We have a lot of citizens, and their voices are lost with the county, but they're gained through us, if we take and annex this in, all their voices are through us, we just had a property.
It's very similar to.
Out by Mr. Sima, that we lost control, Sima, I'm sorry.
And so much. Whatever.
We just lost control of that, because we didn't annex, and now we don't, those citizens that are in this subdivision lost their voice through us, and their voice goes to another community that doesn't share our concerns.
So.
I think we should bring it in, have that control, whether we want to do R1 or RE, Joe says that's more restrictive, if it is, that would be my intent. Because that would eliminate this gentleman's concerns with guns and stuff, because it's our property in the village, you can't shoot guns, if you leave it in the county, again, we don't have that control. So, to gain the control and to be the voice of all these people sitting here, it's my recommendation that we bring this in and take that over.
Let me take a minute to address you guys, because I want to fill in what Stacy's talking about here, I ran for board two years ago because of Edinburgh Estates, about the promontory ridge. And that area was going to be a full-fledged wedding venue, but there were noise restrictions and such, and we went to the board, and we were trying to get this zone, so it would be, they wanted to annex into the village. They, the applicant didn't really get what they wanted, you know, we, the board actually was doing the right thing, they're saying, hey, we want noise restrictions, we want these things put in place, and the applicant said, you know what, enough of this, I'm gonna go to South Lloyd, and they annexed in South Lloyd. So now, South Lloyd, even though they're miles away from us, control that property right next to us, all the sound, so if we want to call the Roscoe Police noise complaints, we can't, it's got to go through South Lloyd, so what Stacy's saying here is that you have to trust the board that if we annex this in, that we're gonna do what we say we're gonna do, and not plat this off, keep it as a single residential area, but if we don't do that, the applicant goes to state to county, you know, it might be more difficult process, we, we have no recourse with South Lloyd. So I just want to give you guys sort of that perspective of things here, that's what he's talking about, so.
Just to piggyback off of that too, like, when they annexed that wedding venue in, we can, we have no control over anything to the north of it, that's in Roscoe's one county jurisdiction, so like, we can't annex anything above it now, so that creates a problem of being able to control any of that development out that way. So it, it's kind of a, which he, uh, it's, it's a tough thing, right, you, I, I hear all your concerns, so Stacy is, is right, I mean, we need to possibly bring this in so we can control what's gonna be there. What they're proposing is, what I understand is one home, we don't have a development from us, there's not 26,000, not 100 houses, right? If they can do R1 at 9,500 on 66 acres, that's gonna look like the half of my neighborhood, which is Trickery Ridge, that's 600 homes in it. So like, the RE trolling it and making it, making sure if a developer does come to us ten years or whatever down the road, we can say, no, we, it needs to look like Cramington, it needs to have an eight-and-a-half lot, it needs to have, you know, some of the same characters, same style homes, stuff like that, so we can again, control what's gonna actually be put there. And again, if we don't, if, if we just say no, we have no control over it, right, and then you're gonna be dealing with somebody that's not gonna listen to you, because that's what happens out with this neighborhood.
I would like to add something to this one. Like, right, myself, we're constituents like you were two years ago. We came, presented just like you did to the board, they didn't listen, that's why we're in this position, so come up with, just like there's several incidents where they've been bothersome to the constituents who live in Roscoe for the same reason we did. We had no controls, and became part of the board and listened to you. Like Stacy and Justin, I've mentioned, though, like, we're, don't have any control, it's annexed. And then all of those processes that all of you aired would have to come to us and force approval, and most of us on this board can all listen to what you wanted to do, and make sure that what we have to do is, we can never answer everything correctly, right, for everybody, but we have successfully with a number of issues that have been brought to us now, we have negotiated fair settlements for sides, so thank you for it.
I have a question. Okay, I'm Ron Besnitz, I spoke earlier. Isn't there a way, though, I, I guess annexing is one thing, zoning's the second thing, and then the third, is there something that once you annexed it, that the village could zone it such that the loading on Sheringham Drive would only be for 40 homes? And such that it would force a developer to find another way to get access, I think a lot of the issues that all of us are having here is gonna be the traffic load, the noise, the safety, we have no sidewalks, no, no infrastructure for the level of traffic. So if it were zoned for one home, I don't think any of us would, would object to anything, I think that's pretty obvious. But it's that, once you have 66 acres, it's pretty obvious in the future to get the value out of that property, they're gonna want to develop it in some way. Is there a way that the village can propose a zoning restriction or a zoning requirement that they come up with another access road other than Sheringham Drive? I don't care where it is, and, and especially like somebody mentioned that the county is developing, well, the county would be coming in from the other direction and probably bring access roads in from the Belvedere County area and not come up Sheringham Drive, because obviously, it's a part of Roscoe already, you, you'd already have control of it. So it, it seems that there, there should be a way to address our concerns in the future, and it sounds like annexing that property inside of Roscoe is probably a good solution, but I'm concerned about the zoning, and, and obviously, you guys understand this, R1, RE, I have no clue what it is at, at all. But in such a way that, you know, it addresses our concerns, so that once these people purchase this property, they have to go through some approval that includes us before they develop it.
If I can jump in really quick, we do the subdivision codes, so if this ever got to the point where they're going to develop even two houses, right, split it, but or subdivide two houses on there, we have subdivision code that does require a traffic study, right, so it would require traffic study, circulation study to figure out, make sure we have the right access for that, so it is required under our current code, we do have requirements for, you know, sidewalks, for road widths, for, you know, narrow traffic going through, for noise, for all of that, so that already, that is in the village of Roscoe code of ordinance, so that is like, is in our subdivision code. So while this draws the line around here, before any, any sort of development can happen out here, besides, it's one lot, you can have more house on it, I think, an outbuilding, actually, I think we added, so you have two, two outbuildings on this size of lot, but there's only allowed to have one house as it is right now, anymore, even two, right, even two houses, they would have to come in, subdivide the property, file a plat with this board who approves that, reviewed by our engineers, make sure, in that case, probably wouldn't be a, a traffic issue, but as soon as it hits that, you know, an issue with multiple homes, there's traffic studies that have to happen, there's, you mentioned, you know, sewer and water, that has to be addressed, I almost have sewer and water out there, but that has to be addressed. All of that to take in consideration on your art code and development code. So by bringing this in, it makes it all your art code, county also has a code, so currently, it's under their code, it's not quite as, I don't think quite as strict as ours, but regardless, it has, there's certain regulations that will apply to this, if it gets subdivided for more than just the one home that's on there.
And one, one other thing to add to that, if, if some developer did come in, everybody within 300 feet of that is gonna get a notice that somebody is wanting to build it, so you will get a letter specifically stating that a developer is wanting to develop this, so that is your opportunity to come in and say, we don't. We don't want. They did the property, or 300 feet of the access road that they're gonna have to use, because that's our big concern, is Sheringham Drive, it'd be the property line, so I, I'm sure if.
Well, seeing that, that's where a big issue is, three weeks ago, we found out that this whole thing was happening at a subdivision, because six homeowners got a notice that there was something happening with that property, and the other 36, you know, homeowners, 33 homeowners were completely in the dark, so you can understand where the extreme level of distrust is right now.
You know, that, that's what happened to us as well, same deal, that's just the law, and I'll tell you one thing, it'll make you guys closer as a neighbor. We're in great promontory, we are, I have a question for Casey, so twigs, are you, are we gonna see in a year from now, two years from now, that this is gonna be, you're gonna be coming back before this board and potentially putting this, I mean, I just want maybe put the neighbors at, at ease here by telling them what, what you think's gonna happen, I mean, 2026, 2027, is, I mean, we're not holding you to anything, but I mean, you're talking, you guys are all neighbors, right, that's how we operate. If that's truly your intent, and you guys feel that way, it's noted that that's what their intent is, is that your intent, not to come back in 26 or? If that's truly your intent and you guys feel that way, it's noted that that's what their intent is. Is that your intent not to come back in twenty-six or twenty-seven?
I'm coming back in my lifetime. It's gonna be one home, one residence in my lifetime. If my great grandchildren decide to subdivide in the future, they'll have to come back before the board and go through this whole process again. So the fact that we're bringing up a multi-home subdivision is misnormal.
That never came from you guys, right? The multi-home subdivision never came from you.
Picture you showed, it's ZBA had clumps of homes in there.
I can, I can address that as well. So this is Carl Gasparra. He is one of the members of the owners of the LLC that currently owns the property. He is a real estate developer, um acquired the land, um considered it for, and as like did some due diligence as a feasibility study to, to see about whether or not he would subdivide it. He's held it for a long time as one member of multi-member LLC. So that, what was shown at ZBA was um because people were asking where their home would be located. And because that feasibility study showed the location and the topographical locations of the area, they just used that to locate where they would put their house. But that's the only reason that there were lines. It's not, he, he's not coming before you for a plat of subdivision. He's very excited that the twigs and one home are coming in and buying his property and instead of developing it or you know, and have, and because he also lives in the subdivision, so he's actually really excited that there's going to be one home there as well.
Is there a way to, like, annexation agreement, like, when you, so if somebody wants to come in and develop a piece of property that's annexed into the village, right? Do you go in and look at the annexation agreement on it?
Um, this doesn't have an annexation agreement. This is just being purely annexed in, but the, the ordinance is.
Is there anything that you look up, when you look at the property?
Yeah, we pull up.
Could you notate, we need to.
Well, this will be in our files for it. So we pull up, we, we do this, and same with this one, we pull up our whole list of permits that were issued on it and what was, what was in the file.
Could we add a note in there to just notify all residents of Remington Creek?
Yes.
So that helps.
Because that's.
How much of that land is, you said you did it at the ZBA meeting, you mentioned s- some of that land is undevelopable? Was there some kind of study done on how, what's developable and what's not developable? When I looked at that picture, I just saw kinda homes here and then maybe developable land up here and developable land up here. What's that, trying to understand, you mentioned that.
I presently have the LLC that owns the land. I'm Carl Gasparra. That uh before we ever purchased the land, we did lots of feasibility. We had Wannabe Go County soil and water, whatever. We bought the entire land for feasibility for septic systems and what would work and what wouldn't. There's flood plains within the land. There's big topographical elevation differences within the land. And it became useful from that feasibility study that was done. It identified where you could actually have houses. And it also showed which sites on that feasibility study would be the most advantageous for soil conditions, for elevations, and what they picked was an area in the woods that it was basically a thirty, thirty-five foot limestone cliff overlooking a, a creek that was mainly flood plain down there. Um, it's, it's an interesting and challenging site. Um, I'm very happy for them. And I, I'd like to point something else out. Someone talked about guns and shooting and whatever. The minute I took ownership of the land and I didn't have to do this, I stopped all hunting or shooting on the whole sixty-six acres. And that's why there's an abundance of deer on it now. I've seen out in the agland part of it as many as eleven or twelve deer at once at dusk. And I don't know, I just didn't want being so close to our subdivision, people shooting guns out there and stuff, so.
There's just one other comment. We just wanted to make sure that we are going in for the subdivision for, you know, I think somebody asked, asked about subdividing just a six acre parcel. We're, we're asking for the whole thing to be annexed in just as one parcel and then allowing that ag use to continue for all of the area that that existing ag use to continue. So we're asking for the whole sixty-six acres to come in.
One other quick clarification, I think will help people understand. Where Sheringham Drive ends now is where it's always gonna end. That's the beginning of their driveway.
You know, the other thing is, um, if you re-annex it, we have ordinances for guns in, in the village, so there won't be shooting back there.
Is there a zoning for like a farmhouse?
This is.
This is.
I, yeah. Yeah, and this is only, again, we'll pick a motion up in here, but this only allows, currently this would only allow one house on this property by our zoning ordinance, so.
And with that, this, if this house is gonna be at the end of that road, so they're in the so-called HO. That's what I'm saying, is, is it, if it's gonna be a big house, just, and that's where the subdivision is gonna stop?
No.
No subdivision for this.
The house.
I mean.
When Sheringham Drive ends.
Yes.
Yes.
There is ag land.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. That, uh, we've already signed the leases for all the crops for that year, for this year that's coming up. That, we talked to the farmer and he knows that the driveway is going to cut through the cropland. He's perfectly good with that. He says he's very used to farming smaller parcels. And then it's gonna head up into the woods and go up to quite an elevation. The house is actually buried in the woods and very high up. Other than during certain times of the year when the leaves are on, not on the trees um at night, they'd probably see the lights from the house in the distance or something like.
But I'm, what I'm kinda, if, if, would that road end at their house and that would be it?
No, the driveway ends.
It's a winding driveway for.
Right, but my, my, my question is, is would, if, if they're gonna build in five years or three years, they're gonna build twenty more homes?
That driveway would have to probably be abandoned. And they'd have to.
We don't know that right now because we don't have. This board would be required to look at that.
That, maybe they would be, the residents would be happy with that if they knew it was gonna kinda.
That's what they said, though. Driveway starts at the end of that road.
Yep.
Yeah, unless they come in and subdivide, that's the farthest it'll ever go. This board will control that as long as we annex it in, and we never subdivide it. Even if they come before us, if we say no, that's the end of it.
Oh, yeah, I get it. I just, I'm just wondering if that eases their concern of a house stopped in the road, their roads and their subdivision go no farther.
Correct.
If that, if that appeases some of the people that live there, that's what I'm asking, is it house is gonna go right there and, and in five years he builds more homes, but that won't go through their subdivision?
Gonna be up to them. Whoever comes and develops, they would develop a conceptual plan to be heard by the board, showing where the roads are going to, to.
I get, I get that, I'm just, I'm just thinking that would peace them, that they would know their thirty-eight, thirty-nine homes turns into forty and that's about it. Unless there's major changes to roads or.
I guess, does anybody else have more questions that we addressed?
Only other question I would have is that, is there a way, all of those few homes that are three hundred feet there, that I, I, it's just gonna rely on our HOA, if you wanna call it, this group of people here just to have good communication.
I just asked him to notate it on this agreement. Um, that way, if a developer does come in the future, they'll pull this document up and it'll say to contact every residence in Remington Creek. That way you all know what's going.
We couldn't quite hear you say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that one? Last question. Um, you, you said that RE is more restrictive than R one?
Yep.
Yes, is that what I heard?
Yeah, that's what we just have there.
How many, so how many other RE uh properties are in the village of, of Roscoe?
Um, I think just five more estates, I think it's RE. Um, I don't know what you guys are, I think it's just five more estates right now. And we have some that were in our old zoning, which was closer to RE, but um I think just one subdivision right now, and Glenwood Estates.
That's when I looked up, when I looked up residential land use matrix and looked at the differences between them.
Yeah.
You can do a lot of things on RE you can't do on R one, like have dog kennels and have um, you know, farming stands and have things that you can't, aren't, you aren't allowed under R one. Like, we can't have dog kennels in our, in our four acres. I wouldn't wanna have dog kennels in a property next door or something of that nature. Is, is, how do we address those variants?
I mean, it's permitted uses in those, um. Yeah, I guess right now it's, it's set for a resi- is residential. Um, I don't know that we have.
They'd have to request a permit since century.
But.
To any, that type of use, they'd have to request a permit.
That would be permitted use, so that would be allowed. Um, yeah, those are allowed, those are permitted. I don't know that. I don't know for UT maybe, but I guess, I mean, yeah, there's a list of permitted uses in that. Um, so single-family dwellings are allowed, occupations are allowed, uh, it's permitted, um beekeeping, chicken keeping, fruit, nuts, vegetable culture, and temporary outdoor portable storage unit. Trim. Um, those are the things that are allowed by right in our residential or real estate zoning. So those are the, those are the, the allowable uses.
So it doesn't allow it to look.
We have dog kennels in that. I think that might be in urban transitional maybe.
Chickens.
Chickens, no roosters, chickens though.
Somebody lives close to me.
Um, any other questions? Otherwise, okay, Josh.
A few things. So piggybacking on what you're talking about, so that could mean on the eight hundred linear feet plus, you could have chickens there.
You have six chickens?
Adjacent to the existing homes of.
Uh, we've got a setback for chickens. I can get you, but yeah, I mean, I.
You know what I mean, and so you could have it the driveway.
There's a setback and there'd only be six, it's only allowed in.
Storage unit could be, you know, the.
There's setbacks, right?
The point.
You can look up.
Yeah, we can get you all that if you want.
Look at the Roscoe Code of Ordinance.
Yeah, you can look at the Code of Ordinance.
And then to, let's go, go back to Mrs. Chadwick, she said that the uh getting another addition to subdivision would be difficult. I wanna remind everybody that there's three plats that were developed in ninety-one, ninety-three, and ninety-four, which are in those exhibits. So again, I think a good solution here would be to develop a plat. Seems like Mr. Gasparra has most of that already done, put a small parcel that fits in with the neighborhood that could be a part of Remington Creek, it could be a part of our, I won't call it deed restriction, that's just kind of layman's terms, but our covenants uh would be my suggestion, or another driveway that doesn't go through Remington uh Creek. Can we come in again a different way?
John, I, I think, you know, it really is about mediation, you're in the right. By controlling it with the board and having these discussions, and maybe you guys see it right now, that we're, we're gonna look out for you, we're gonna look out for the, the chair as well, we're gonna make sure that this works. But we can't do any of that unless it's annexed.
Oh, we're hearing that and I appreciate that.
And so that, that, so I don't want you to think we both to vote in and annex RE that we're tipping our hand or some type of uh deal or anything, which assess applicant, what their intent is. So I think that that's a pretty good place. You're in a much better place than we were at Edinburgh Estates. Um, you know, and the fact that uh, you know, both sides are listening, it seems like gets people on the same thing, so it's just how it's done, right?
An annexing does not guarantee a subdivision. This, this overall, and that's not what's in front of us, so there's no reason to flat anything like that right now.
Unless you wanted to have one home that.
Well, or even one home.
To have a part of our neighborhood.
It is one home. One home.
But have it part of the neighborhood, not to have a driveway.
Legally, we could force them into your neighborhood.
That's private between, yeah, it's a private, we need that, but, and you can certainly do that, that's a discussion you have with Casey.
We are limiting them as much as possible, and we are taking the control so we can be your voices. That's the best we can do tonight.
Thank you.
And, and our promise that we're, you know, not subdividing it anytime soon.
You have a pretty solid board, but I think if this did come back to us in a year, that we'd say, you know, obviously take a look at it, it would affect what's supposed to, right? We've got to look at everything. And if it's ten homes, if it's five homes, you know, it just, it would fit, right? I mean, if there's no other access, you know, the traffic study will kind of control some of that too, like you can't put a hundred houses on if you only have one road, right? So we, we wouldn't be able to do that to begin with. And none of the other land around this annexed, then you can really just go and start. That we don't, that the person doesn't own, right?
What motions from the board or any more discussion from the board?
I feel comfortable moving to vote.
So moved. So motion would be to uh a kind of people are of annexing this property in a single-family rural state residential district um with continued pre-existing agricultural use.
And Justin's addition to make sure that if anything comes before us.
Like, and we'll note in the file that future uh zoning requests will go to the entire. No limitations, right, the whole. Okay, here was a motion by Shashi Saima, second by.
Second.
I see Malco. And roll call please.
Saima.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Teddy.
No.
Wright.
No.
Yes. This will be at the board level, so still same group of people, but one more, one more uh units will go to, will be on the April fifteenth Village Board meeting. So, um, that's when approval, so approval hasn't happened yet, but it'll be at that meeting, so you'll have one more chance to see that. Um. Next item, I thank you, by the way, for everything you did come in, just, hey, you appreciate that. Um, number three, egg number three is discussion recommendation of approval of replat for the properties located at one zero three zero seven, one zero three seven five Clearwing Lane, pin number zero eight zero five uh zero one six and zero eight zero six three one zero zero two. Applicant is Josh Petrie. Please, we have a during for the applicant here, Petrie is here as well. Um, I think my, I'm just gonna tell, uh, I'm presenting.
Just let him throw up for a sec, as I get my little bug phone show set up here for you guys.
Right here. If you could hold on for the rest of my term, I'll vote no.
All right, introduce yourself to the board and.
Yes, hello everyone. Uh, my name is Jeff Lincoln Hell. I'm a civil engineer with Arc Desire Resources. I do site development work for several clients in the area. Um, I'll be in front of you in another couple months with another guy, uh, and maybe even a third. Uh, I'm a dumb pike here, but this project here representing Mr. uh Josh Petrie for a development within the interior confines of Clearwing Subdivision. Um, a brief history for you. I happened to be the engineer in two thousand and one, when the tentative plat for Clearwing Subdivision presented to this board. And man, that's a long time ago. Um. At the time, this lot A was designated as a community lot. At the time, this lot A was designated as a community lot or and or community center. On the tentative plat. Um, it was approved that way. In uh, so that's twenty twenty one, twenty oh one, twenty oh four. We were already up to plat number three of Clearwing. So we'd done plats one and two. And at the time of plat number three, my client at the time, Mark Borgo. Uh, representing Petrie Trust, Josh's dad. Um, came in and asked for this to be converted into um residential as part of plat three. The board at the time said, no, we want to leave it as a community lot. And so Mr. Borgo agreed to that. Um, there may be documents um from some fact finding that the village staff did to that effect, um. And so plat three was. Approved with this remaining the community lot and then subsequently plat four was the final. Um, subdivision of the property to complete the road networks and all the lots, et cetera. Um. Over the course of the last twenty plus years, the development has been basically completed. The property has been. Sold off to various entities, um, including, you know, some condo associations or condominium lots. That where people own their own units, uh, for people on an individual lot. Um, some are rental units, um, I know one is a. Um, the first Midwest group, Sunil Group uh has several units in here. Um, during my investigation, I counted uh. No less than a dozen separate entities that own properties within Clearwing. Um, I quit counting at a dozen, uh, there could be a few more, didn't count every single lot. But suffice to say that there's the the interests of the development have in the last twenty years have significantly splintered. So, interestingly enough, um, Mr. Petrie here acquired this lot from his father. And um, it's it's under single ownership, single entity. Um, he owns the land free and clear, it's not part of any condo association or any HOA. Um, it's just a piece of property in the middle of Clearwing. And as such, um, with the twelve plus individual ownership entities. There is, you know. A not less than zero or a not more than zero chance, but uh almost a zero chance of. Anybody saying like, well, let's all band together and let's build a community center for the people that were renting these places to or that we've already sold to years ago. So, uh, Mr. Petrie and um has approached the village and this was back. Even late as as late as late last year, we approached the village staff and said, we want to uh convert. This lot A into something more usable and more uh beneficial to the community, more beneficial to Mr. Petrie instead of just a weed patch. And so worked with staff to come up with a development plan. And a lot of you are familiar with the uh townhome styles that he has proposed and we've all agreed to uh for that second. Or the plat six of Hawks Point, so these would be. Uh, as opposed to what is out there now, which are kind of like massive garages in the front, some people. Live underneath your neighbor on the top floors, um, these would all be individual entry, individual garage. Uh, front entry, you own front to back, you own, you know, floor to ceiling, everything straight up, so. Um, you know, it's 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 a little bit different market, but I think it's like an upgrade to whatever was built in, you know, the twenty years ago. So, uh, we did come up with this plan, um, it's got twenty three total units. Um, what is it, six buildings, one, two, three, four, yeah, six buildings, um, there's a little open area here, we've got accessory parking. Uh, worked through staff with all this and submitted to. The village formally for our planning and development in January for the February meeting. At the February zoning meeting, um, regrettably, uh, we're throwing heaven, uh. Under the bus that I I never doubt did get a copy of the staff report, but the staff report was riddled with. This uh lot being nothing but like park. It was all going to be reserved as a Clearwing park for. You know, for in all the development history and I'm like, I that doesn't, that doesn't jive with me, my memory from twenty some years ago. Um, and so we pulled, we pulled the application at that meeting, went back to had a second meeting with staff. We asked staff to go back through their archives, I went through my archives, um, you know. It's kind of cool that they, you know, Joe went and found letters from me to the village back in two thousand and four, um. But we ended up with, you know, it was the community center idea, the community lot idea, yes. Park, green space, open space, no. So we came back to the zoning board the next month after the layover, there were the corrections made to the zoning staff report. Um, which I think accurately accurately reflect what was um. The original intent of the project, and so then we came back and secured approval through the zoning board. Um, with the staff endorsement to go forward with this plan, and so we are here to to do that. Um, this is our next step in our process to approve this. Um. And I guess. I'm going to really bring up the elephant in the room, um, I heard Mr. Babcock say it. Uh, at the last meeting, so I know that there's several of you here that. We had a pleasure of working uh with slash against um a couple of years ago for Hawks Point and. Um, you know, there, I think that if you look at the development as a whole, I mean. Some of you are going to be inclined to just say, well, because it's it's got Petrie name attached to it, it's an automatic no. But I'm asking you to consider it on the merits of the project, not so much whatever name recognition there is, and I can. Personally attest that in the Petrie family, you know, the the blood is thicker than water idea is not really, it's not really there, so. Uh, it's every man for himself, um, Josh is trying to do some good things in the town, um. Yeah, he's got, he's, you know, the Hawks point five, I mean, those are some really quality buildings that he's putting up there. Um, so he's trying to do good things by the community, so I'm, I guess I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, let's not. Say, oh, it's 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 got a Petrie name attached to it, so we're gonna, you know, shoot this down, I'm saying. If this was one of the guys that I'm gonna be here for next month, you know, Tony Piffatone, you know, would you say this is a great idea, Tony? And the answer is probably yes. And so does that make this any less of a great idea? Cause it's Josh's. And I'm gonna say, no, it doesn't. With that, I can answer questions or Josh is here to answer questions or can talk amongst yourselves.
Well, there's no harm, so I'll just go on the record.
And I would say like. I I didn't see any elephants in this room. You know, we think, uh, you know, we had never been in this position before. But we appreciate it that Josh actually came to the table. We talked through the things and I think we ended up with a better solution as well, so I think. Nobody, nobody here is not going to do what reasonable minds would say. This is unfortunate, I was not here last week or talked about the zoning of this, I was not very familiar with it, so. What is the green space up front is, um, what is that? Just a park or just an acre space there?
Well.
I mean, right.
The limits of the color drawing are the limits of the property, the lot itself. Uh, the brownish colors here are the six buildings.
Right there in the middle.
Right here.
Yeah, that looks like a.
This is, it's just an open area, um.
It's a lot, is that like an acre, half an acre there?
I think the whole total property is like two points.
So Josh is the recent owner of the property?
Josh, Josh is the current owner of the property.
Cause I drove by, it's just like for a long time, should have weed covered, so.
Yes.
So this will be an improvement over the grass that's grown there now, right, Josh?
Yeah, yeah, of course, you know. Be many buildings. Be an approval of the grass, yes.
Uh, I mean, I'm in favor of the building, are you open to, and I just handed out something that interests you guys. My, I'm envisioning a hundred yard grass field. Where in this would have to be, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but maybe we buy two soccer nets. And we have a hundred yard with a gravel, jet gravel around it. We're asking, are you open to? Couple hundred yards of. Where the kids can go throw frisbees or throw balls, play football, play some soccer. For that whole subdivision in there, is there enough space in there?
I think. Personally, my family's giving the village, I think, an off land to. For kids to throw frisbees and do all that, so no, I'm not.
Mr. Ray, look, there was talk of the park. But I mentioned it in my preamble a month ago or so ago, um, and so. Actually, I had my staff for draw a little park exhibit. Um, that I'm kind of springing on you guys here.
I mean, we're.
Yes, well, I got ten four. This is the actual size of the property, so. That's a side, that's a high school soccer field laid out on the on the on the slot, um. Did you get it? Remember, so. I'm looking at your drawing here.
Yeah, my my own means my correct.
Right, so I mean, it's a great idea, except for the problem is is you, we're kind of trying to fit a uh. A miniature version of an actual soccer field slash uh track. I mean, really, the property is not that big. I think if basically the pro, if if you if you put us a high school soccer field on this property, basically maxes it out as you can see there. Um, so.
Think you meet a pickle court, that's.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe a little pickle pickleball.
I I would consider any green space, that's what we're trying to do, I mean, these subdivisions that we're putting here, finally deciding to put. Green space in people that live around.
Well, one thing I did um note at the planning commission, and I'll 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 use your drawing as a reference, cause you have a good aerial. Look at, look at the neighbors. Along this this energy over here and look at the amount of lot area there is under. For each individual building compared to what we're showing here. We've got way, way more green space on on this larger property, just because we can, we can kind of develop it as a little community. Then these individual lots having, you know, the massive driveway in the front. And then the basically the building taking up the bulk of the rest of the property. Here we've got the skinnier units, the two stories, the single car driveways, the supplemental parking and really a lot of green space. If you look at it compared to these neighbors. So I I'd ask you to consider that as.
Okay, this is why.
Benefit.
She's, you see staff recommendation out there, I, I know you put a few staff, it's I'm part of staff, right, met with um, Michelle Helle and Petrie. About this, um, I think what, yeah, January, whatever it was, I mean, this is how we came up with that, right, we looked at the. Sort of the ideas that you guys put, that you guys have worked together on that Hawks point six and what you requested and. How it fits in with the rest of that community there and. That's, that's how this came about of having extra, you know, extra parking, it's got extra green space, it's not as dense as the rest of the neighborhood there. It's got nice setbacks away from the rest of the, um, the rest of that that neighborhood, rest of those buildings, I think they're nicer buildings than. The uh, the rest of that neighborhood in there, you guys have drawn, drove, gone through there, a lot, mostly rentals that are in that, um. In Clearwing, um, or in that portion of it, so that's how we came up with this, but yeah, obviously. Green space. We have not, no, we posted, I I think maybe Trusty Wright received a phone call from somebody. Um, but most, I think the majority in there are, you know, are renters or they're the landlords who aren't. As you know, concerned with that, the renters haven't come, really come in with us on this, um. We really haven't had that, you saw that one we had here, you've seen other ones we've had previously, we haven't had those that either. Um. You know, our signage out there that uh probably put up or the. Um, you'll notice there's a thing happening, come to this, mailings went out and more mailings than than the previous one, actually, because of just how it's all. Laid out there, um, those notices went out to everybody and we haven't really had any sort of feedback or response from. But obviously, this is absolutely, this is your color, this is a replat, um, so you guys have authority to. Big decision, but though that's sort of the. Development that, uh, you know, we can, we sort of supported to try to have, make that usable landing actually into something there. Um, other than just the empty field that's been replaced and time.
You said you've already given to the village, I'm not familiar with that, what have, is there?
Do you, you really want to get into this and have me name all the properties throughout the last twenty five years that my father has given to the village?
Couple, sure.
I mean, just.
Forty acres down by the river. The three lots in Denali, I just gave you guys lots in Hawks Point.
One.
Two.
One, I had, I had a fight, I had to spend. I mean, it's not worth it. Like, we've been so fair over time that. You know, I just, I feel like this, you know, we sat down, we had a meeting with Joe and, you know, I mean. This, this was never. I mean, it's, this would just be a little private community within Clearwing anyways. Like it wouldn't be for people to come over to other neighbors' yards and have their dogs go to the bathroom or. Play frisbee, like that's not what it's meant to be.
I know it's not meant to be.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just saying, it would be nice as we continue to build in the in Rosco that we have something that.
What you, what you doing, because there's detention areas in Clearwing that are. The size of a soccer field that the kids could go down there and play, but they don't, they decide to walk their dogs. On a property that they don't own, you know, so what's wrong with those places in Clearwing? Why does it have to be my property? You know, I mean, there's huge fields over there, back in the back corner.
Can you move back?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I think the the question comes to what's the best use of that property? And its overall aesthetic appeal and who's going to be using it, it's going to be a P U D. Correct? And the residents within that area would have access to that. So as I'm looking at that little bit of open space in front of the four buildings. Is, yeah, I I have no way of judging how square feet that is, uh, is that enough space for a park bench? Is it enough space?
Easily.
Yeah.
Well, so, uh, if people wanted to have reflection. There isn't enough space to put in a park, a playground and all of that kind of stuff, I hear you say. Uh, but if there's a little bit of an area for reflection or watching your dog or doing whatever, that would suffice. And the other point I'd like to make, there are lots of recreational areas and. Short drive of this subdivision.
Can I say something? These are going to be young families coming in here, a lot of kids, starter homes. Worrying about people getting hit by cars, kids playing bikes, that type of thing, that's really, really the concern is just like, is there a place? For kids to play outside of a retention ditch, I mean, that's, that's, if you're eight years old, you don't have the opportunity to get in the car and go somewhere after school. Play, uh, that's my whole point, I mean, I just, I just think like, you know, that space is big enough where. You said it's not meant for kids to play frisbee, I I'd like to have kids playing frisbee, I'd rather and rather get in trouble or get hit by a car or something like that. That's all my concern is, cause you're gonna have thirty year olds, people first house on the market, they're gonna have babies, they have kids. And there's gonna be a lot of kids there and, um, you know, thought is is that. Is there a place for them to go? Want to grow up in a childhood where there's nowhere to go to play, I mean, or to do anything, um.
What?
And and that's how, and that's how kids get in trouble too, I mean, it's just like things start happening, I I I'm I'm just saying that that, cause that's big enough for something, I think what Mike's saying, what we're all saying is. It's just how do we, how do we make it work? You know, that's, that's good for kids.
Just the area you're talking about.
What is the demographic of the population there?
Yeah, that's an interesting question, I. I'm not sure that I can answer that, I don't, I don't know.
You, you know, I mean, I guess the way that I look at it with the extra green space. Within this P U D would be for the families that move in to that P U D, not for. The three hundred other families that live in Clearwing, you know, it seems like you guys are wanting. Something for everybody that's already there over the last twenty years, I mean, if we're talking, we have enough green space for kids. Within that P U V to play frisbee, like there is enough. Within that P U V to play frisbee, like there is enough room there for that. You know, just those twenty three units, not everybody else, though.
There's gonna come over though, aren't they? Could you just point out the retention ditch on there, so I have a. Understanding.
The, the detention area is for. It can't carry us from Clearwing or down here at the south end.
There's guys my times. So you can't build?
These are unbuildable, correct? This is the property up there, is the property that we're talking about right now, um. I mean, I'll go back.
Those aren't, I, those aren't wet. I don't believe that, no, right Jeff?
Nothing out there is wet.
Like they don't fill with water and hold.
Is that something you own?
No.
No, I think, I mean, maybe the buildings.
I think that the way, the way it was done back when his dad was doing stuff, we, yeah, this would be like one guy's lot, so this guy here. Owns the entire thing, he, he's legally responsible to maintain it, this guy's legally responsible to maintain that. I think this is the ditch. Behind that comes through there. So.
With maintain.
There's no, there's no H O A or anything like that in, in Clearwing to. Just do this, right, which now that I thought, I'll bring that up as well. And apologies for my cold, and hopefully I don't run out of gas before I run out of words, um. There is, there, there, even though back in two thousand four, when they had this whole thing of like, no, you gotta maintain this as a community center. There was never any follow up to. Initiate an H O A and or an association within Clearwing to generate funds to build a community center. So all these people that have come in. Buying these buildings and re, either condoing them or renting them out. None of them have any financial stake in this outlaw day. It's just all basically a hundred percent owned by Josh. Um, so to that point. If we can develop this, clean it up. You know, get some manicured lawn areas here, I think, um, you know.
How many places are there behind them? They're way behind the house.
Um, this area here, wow, shoot, this is.
Like behind it.
Here?
Yeah, they're back here.
So that, yeah, that's, uh, I think these patios are like ten by ten, so there's at least four more patios behind there, forty feet or so. This one's a little closer, forty three, these are about thirty feet.
Forty three feet.
Hmm?
Forty three feet, Brandon says.
Great, he's an expert. Yeah, so. Again, um. At the planning commission meeting, I had drawn in red here, this is the, this is the adjacent building that, uh, we, our guys surveyed when we were out there. And on Mister Wright's drawing, you can see how. It just kind of gobbles up the entire lot.
I'm not asking for a, you know, a new bear stadium, you know. Um. I'm just, I'm for the development, I, I would need some more green space, period.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's, I'm not, that was a drawing.
I mean, it's, this village is gonna maintain it and they're gonna pay for it, that's what's gonna happen.
That, I can't.
Green space and you guys are gonna maintain it.
I can't, I, that would happen.
I mean, is that something that you guys are interested in?
I can't, I can't answer it.
I mean, if we like zoned off a little, you know, or maybe not little, but just a piece and said, all right, there's the green space, there's park space, it's gonna have it.
I would be in favor.
In that little community, and then you guys are responsible for the hundreds of kids that are gonna be over there. And then, you know, I'm gonna have to deal with all the issues within the P U D because these people aren't gonna want all those kids over there from the neighborhood. Because they just renting in a little community. That was, they're supposed to be their own, you know.
I, I would, I would recommend this, that we. We, we've spent a lot of months on getting this to this point with the village staff recommendations. Water and sewer permits, et cetera. Um, to start negotiating some sort of changes in the middle of a community, committee meeting, I think would be. I, I don't know that that's the road we want to go down, I, I guess. We're probably, we're here to say, this is the plan we want you to vote on and approve. And, you know, if, if it comes down to like adding a picnic table or something, per. Harold's suggestion, we'll do it.
I would say though, you know, if you look back, you're right, he's gonna do it better, right? But there should have been a park somewhere in this place to begin with, and all this stuff, right? I mean, nothing, all. True, there's just, there's tons of terms of houses and there's nowhere for anyone to go.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, if, but if you think of this as like an infill lot, that like this is. What's built is built, and I said twenty some years ago, I stood here, her, well, it was a different building at that time, but. We got the tenant of approved in subsequent buckets, twenty some years ago, so.
Some other term, you should have had some type of park or some, wasn't that what the retail space was, boards for the green land for all those properties that were involved originally?
Well, it was originally set up as a community center, so if you said, like, okay, now it's gonna be a building and apartment lot, so everybody can come here and have their annual. H O A board meeting, I, I, I don't know, bingo, whatever.
Can you put that back? Down at the bottom where the retention is. Why don't we just go, the, an investment group owns all of that? Why don't we just go to that investment group and ask for that bottom section to be completed to the village, they won't have to maintain it anymore. We'll get more park land, he gets to build what he wants. And there's way more space down there than what we're gonna get out of it.
So only thing I want the board to understand is those are retention ponds.
Yes.
When it does, when we get major storm events, those will be wet, tr, usually they are dry ponds. Permanent structures cannot be built there.
No.
Um, I mean, we do see in other areas, actually the subdivision just to the west of this. Um, where trampolines and things like that are placed in the detention easement, that is never, I would never recommend that because it can. If, if we get a massive rainstorm, that stuff can float downstream, can plonk over, it's that then affect upstream drainage. I'm not gonna say that that absolutely would happen here, but I, I just want you to be. You know, thinking of that, that, yes, while during dry weather, it's, it's a good use of space and generally families do use their detention areas as play areas. Um, it's just, I don't know if that's something that also we want to take on the responsibility of long term.
Okay.
So just.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I'd like a wall for the vote.
Yeah, I would just like add, you know, when you take a look at that, and I live close to, I've been there many, many, many times, to your point, Mike and Mike's, like Greensville. You know what, I see kids and they have friends there, and their kids are playing the current thing, and you take a look at all of that, it's already done. There are plenty of parks close by there that people can go to, and I don't think they're gonna go to, but anyway. That's all I would say, so to me, it's a good solution for, for the land. Let's go for the vote.
Any motions, does somebody want to make a motion?
I just don't sort of, I've called for the vote.
So we don't have a motion on the floor, what motion would you like to make?
Isn't there actually two motions? I mean, I'm, hopefully everything I talked about covers both events.
Recommendation for approval of replat for the properties.
Motion by trustee Patty. Second. Second by, uh, trustee Belcock.
And we're just sending it to the board, right?
Just sending to the board for, yeah.
For final decision.
Correct. Roll call.
Right?
No.
Simon?
No.
Block?
Yes.
Patty?
No.
Maliko?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Three, three, so we'll go to the board without recommendation. All right. And we have seen. I, um, so let's go to the board without recommendation, um.
There's two items.
Yes, the next, yeah, next item is, that will, next item is discussion. Recommendation for approval of planning unit development for the properties located at one zero three zero seven and one zero three seven five thirty eight, right? So the first one was to allow the replat. The second item is to, um, approve the. Planning unit development, which will be with just that actual. Layout designs of the vision, or visual vision, but that, that development right there.
Basically, everything I just brambled about, let's tap out, correct?
Why don't we send it to the board, second?
Motion by trustee Maliko, second by trustee Block. Um, any just more discussion, otherwise roll call.
One, one discussion.
Yeah.
I just think that there could be some compromise to get something going here for a space for the kids, that's all I'm asking for is, is to. I'm really.
I agree.
It's not, I don't want to get to this level where, listen, we think it's a great design, we do, and I'm, and, and I'm just saying this, it's like a kid that grew up in Chicago, right, in the city. There's no place to play. I don't want kids getting hit by cars, I want the, you know, people to do it, it sucks that there's, if you just look at the arid all there, there's all this. Farmland around it, and you're stuck in this urban area, and you're right, everybody's gonna come down and play there, so I think it's some type of quirk, I don't know, but I think that. If there's gotta be something we can do with this, I really do, it's a great plan, it's just.
I just didn't, I had a question, why isn't the village, you know, I grew up, I grew up in Colorado, and. In our community that we grew up in, they had big fields that everybody would gather at, like, you know, they didn't have, like, community parks, you know, I mean. Like, and then when they developed these areas, like, didn't it, it wasn't this discussion, you know, it's like, hey, you had like. You know, North Boulder Park, right, like, that's where everybody went. You know, I mean, everybody played frisbee there, it's a ten acre park, everybody, you can do whatever you want, you know, and then we come in here with these developments all the time, and it's. It's the same thing over and over. So I, I just, I don't, I don't understand, like, you know, maybe that should be a discussion in the future for some.
I, I agree, I mean, the thing is.
Estiment for the village to not.
If you're mobile, like, kids come back from out of school, after school, if you can get in a car, you have wheels, you can go somewhere to go to the park or whatever, that's cool, I mean, you can do that, right? It's just, you know, from after school. Walking dogs, you know, just riding your bike in the neighborhood, stuff like that. It's very difficult to do when you're a little, when you're under sixteen, and, and, uh. That's, that's the whole thing, and I know that the people that are gonna move in here are gonna be people that are, are gonna buy houses, they're twenty five to thirty years old, and they're gonna have kids. And that's where they're gonna be playing, that's where that's gonna be their world, and I want it to be a cool place to, you know, um, that's, that's really where I'm coming from.
Well, you've got a motion on the table, it's discussion. I'm not really supposed to talk for Robert's rules, but what we would say would be, you know. You're gonna vote on to pass this through, and we've got two weeks to try and figure out some compromise prior to the board meeting, right, which is on the fifteenth?
Can I just make a comment of? Again, going back to what you said, where we would take on our ship of something. And just looking at it, if I have a background in design, would there be any way you could take the four on the bottom and just flip them into the center in that bottom section? I mean, just look at it over the next two weeks or whatever, that might be something that. Everybody's everyone, that, just looking at it, that's the biggest piece, right, is down there.
Yeah, I mean, if there's something we can do without losing, you know, it's the number of units that, you know, we've kind of already budgeted for, so I mean, definitely, there's something we can do with keeping the same amount of units that we have there, I mean, I'm all. I'm all for it, you know, it's, but as soon as I have to start.
No, I get you're in business.
Losing buildings or losing units, that's where it's just, the numbers don't make sense for the, oh, sorry, no.
Sounds very good, two weeks to figure this out, and so, um. Ready for vote?
Okay, ready?
Roll call.
Babcock? Maliko?
Yes.
Patty?
No.
Block?
Yes.
Simon?
I'm what you asked, you sent it to the board, you have the discussion.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
So yeah, people will reach out, people will discuss this next.
Thank you.
Um. Oh, okay, turn number five, you should go very quickly, I think, I number five is special recommendation, verify only part of transportation resolution for improvement. Uh, under the only highway code, mark two thousand five hundred dollars. I think you're right in the packet, branding went pretty well, this is a. Resolution, we've already approved this, a resolution for resolution previously, we're gonna work, we're gonna pay for it. This is the paperwork that has to get filed with the partner transportation, so this is the I dot paperwork. Give us for all my N F T projects as well as, you know, these. So if you have any questions about it, I'm sure Brandon will be happy to ask, answer, otherwise, uh, we have a motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call please.
Maliko?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
I number six, special recommendation of declaring surplus, uh, to. Uh, sorry, zero tone mower, I forgot, zero tone, or zero turn mower, this is the old mower, uh, from the village, uh, that we bought a couple of years, more than a couple of years ago at this point. I think Troy has really good tip report in there noting that it's breaking down a lot, um, we're gonna be using this as part of a trade in. But because it's village property, we have to clear it surplus before we can do anything with it. Um, so if I can make a motion, otherwise. Uh, motion by trustee, second by trustee Patty, any questions for Troy? You can bash on this if you want, um, roll call please.
Yeah. Simon?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
I number seven is special recommendation of purchase of two Kubota zero turn mowers, um, these are ones that we're in the budget, these are the ones that we need to use to. Anything else our parks.
Motion send to the board.
Uh, motion by trustee Block, second by trustee Wright. Uh, roll call please.
Maliko?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Block? Uh, I number eight, discussion recommendation of terms of other landscaping, the volume amounts of twenty three thousand eight hundred and eight dollars to refill the Deutsch Hall retaining well and restoration of the turf. Saw pictures, I think, Troy said about a few weeks ago, um, bringing this part, and you need to get this, uh, repaired, it's not a structural issue, but it definitely is. We got a big hole with no retaining wall by it behind us, um. If there's any questions, Troy and, uh, Brandon can, we want to have you answer those.
Did we get two quotes or?
We got eight, they're on the, I think, we got eight, five, eight, yeah, we got a lot of quotes.
Cool, okay, and I was, that's one.
Yes, yep, um, yes, it was. They're all, I would note they were all roughly the same, they're very, very close, almost forty four thousand, all of them are very close, the twenty two, twenty threes, um, and this is the lowest for, uh, doing the whole project. Um, for motion, this is the board for.
Second.
Motion by trustee Block, second by trustee Wright. Roll call.
Patty?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
All right, next full comments, turn public comments?
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
All right, thank you, um, uh, no public comment, I'll leave this in the outline. We have presentation, project updates requested, such laptops, those are in the process of being ordered, uh, because of the. Uncertainty, there's wide price fluctuations, um, while we've got proposals coming from premier. Um, they were directly with no well on tax, we'll have our, our bit out contract for that, um, and when people's purchased.
Oh, I have a question on that.
Yes.
So do we have like an inventory process, like we know when people check out, like, you know, Mike got a computer. Scott Sanders took it, Ryan Alford.
We do know.
And we don't know where the heck it is.
We do know.
Where is it?
No, remember where the computer is, we have an inventory process now, we are tracking inventory now.
We have said not, not had a computer since Scott left, so that's insane, I mean, we need to like, I mean.
We have not had inventory process, we are inventorying things now and keeping them track of things, but we allow our.
We should also have some type of process when we sign out, we, we're responsible for our, our.
We do have a sign out form, but we don't, we, we never had a sign out.
Like when I got assigned it.
It would have been with your key fob, it would have been with your computer and your key fob, but.
Well, my point is, I, I never used one, I gave it back, and I don't wanna leave. The village and say, hey, where's your computer, I say, well, remember, like, uh, you know, a couple of months ago, I gave it to you to give it to you or whatever, and. I just think it would have got tighter control over that.
I, I understand, and we are tracking those now, we're just, we're tracking them out in, uh, we'll just, yeah, we are, we are tracking things, there's other things that. We were not tracking either, so we are making sure we. We track of our property a little better, um. So yeah, let's, let's push your votes, your votes will be here for the, hopefully for the first swearing in of the new board. Um, if you have other documents on there and all their content, um, I just run small business, uh, incubators. I think the question with this was maybe the, well, it's progress on that is, those will be about ready to go out for bid. Um, they'll have that coming to you in, I think, next board meeting, we're going after that, they'll have the full bid package for that to get that project out. Um, and phasing on that, but you'll have that coming at next, I think next board meeting, we have it, um, on the fifteenth.
And the sign for there?
Um, sign for there too, so now we've got actual schedule, well, we've got signs, we've got the drawings for those, it's just we didn't want to put those up there and start really promoting it until we. Pretty answer the questions about when is this happening, um, to school. Um, the intention may be to, to get the pads built on there and get some of the, uh. Huts, uh, uh, market incubator buildings built this summer, and then schools to do the rest of them in the fall. Huts, uh, market incubator buildings built this summer, and then schools to do the rest of them in the fall. Just so we have some, at least a couple of samples that we get, work all the way through, get them set, so the school's got sort of a template to follow, um, as they build those through. Um, so that's the plan for that, but yeah, now we've got this sort of set, you know, timeline a little better. Um, we can get those that sign up there showing, hey, here's what's coming, you'll actually start seeing construction now. We still, I mean, premature on that, on people's questions without really knowing. It's not a war, so. Well, that's the plan for that.
The R P, can you move that to the next meeting?
Yes, and we have options of that, if anybody wants them too, they're on the website, you've got developers who want, you know, sign to the website, scan the Q R code. Um, sign the, um, the sign out there, if everybody saw that on, on the liberty property. That's our village website, and we've got, you can print copies, if you've got completely wanting to hang them out too, um, the whole packet includes the. Detention, so it's a good chunk, so whereas now, you can print copies for people or give copies to people. Um, so that's R P, then I got to start with timeline, the timeline does remain the same. It's just that, that final, how long it can take for you guys to decide, and you talk about that, it's fine. Um, and then purchase of one oh five, one seventy street, which is the Liberty Lots. Um, that is in the process of being, we've run a time check for our, uh. Our, our, this money down, right now, Pergram is working on the, uh, environmental study on that, hopefully that comes back clear. Um, we'll see, we think it, we think it will, um, there were some fire buildings on there, but we think that won't be a problem. So once they get that report back to us, like I said, about three days or so, um, we're in a ninety day due diligence period currently. But once we get that, we'll get the opposing schedule, then we'll, we'll take title to that. But just particularly that, so this whole downtown area, we always wanna make sure we do a good job on that, uh, environmental studies. Just because of the, the prior uses in the area. Um, but that, yeah, we're in a contract for that, and that's in progress by Pergram, so.
Yeah, just too quick, can you pull up an email, like I sent you a picture of a road? And while you're pulling that up, um, I've been talking with staff just of how we can better. Help them do their daily jobs, it's gonna be really overwhelmed, um, so I, I. Think we need to take another look at our software programs. Feel like there's something in there that could help us. Like, just like maybe Anne and Troy to get together and.
Well, make a list.
Right.
Chief gave me a list of, of the police department, yes.
Yeah, make a list of any programs you think might be able to help your department do things.
But a list of existing software.
Right. Any additional software we might be able to purchase to help free them up some more, so they can work on bigger things.
Help me understand, what, what problem did you zero in on? Can you be able?
Just in general, I mean, when, when you call up, or, you know, it's just, you know, we're, we're really swamped with things, and I mean. There's A I programs that can do a lot of things, that can take a ten, ten page document, summarize it for you, so you know all the bullet points of it, there's just. There's so much out there that. Free up.
Are we utilizing all our, our software, I mean, is there any other add-ons that maybe could help? Troy or Anne, or is there anything we should be investigating?
I'm just, I'm looking at.
Your own programs, or budgeting programs.
Next one needs to be for, would be.
Scheduling for example.
Yep, yeah, I think over scheduling stuff, so Troy's guys are scheduling stuff.
I'm just trying to throw the example.
Yeah, the next one's gonna be, would be.
Reason why I'm bringing this up, it's not because somebody came to me with a problem, I think, it's more of a. How can we be efficient with what we have, instead of hiring people at seventy five thousand dollars a year, or buy a software program that can help them? Cut their time in half for fifteen hundred bucks, right? So it's, it's all me, it's not anybody coming to me saying, hey, I'm having trouble with this, it's, it's, I'm just trying to. Yes, see how we can be a little bit more efficient.
Yeah.
I just wanna take a look at it all.
I'll tell you, yeah, we can give you the software that we use for the, we can demo that for you too, what we use for, we add a lot into it, we got, uh, actually, everybody's got software now. We've got one for home enforcement, as for that, only thing we're missing is the upgrade to Glazierisch. Once we get that going, we should be good, um, just knowing though, we are, we are, we're, we're using, we're using software, we're at the lowest staffing levels we've had in for. Years, right, I mean, we're super low right now, so we are doing a lot with our software, a lot with what we've got, but again, there's three of us.
So we call it J Doge, right, Justice Department of Efficiency.
Yeah, exactly.
But again, it's me reaching out to staff of how we can help them, and I think, I thought my words are important, my feel, but. I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention, this is Spark Road.
Right?
It's great, good.
Almost half the road, it's a path.
Right, so I was out there the other, I drove past, looked over, I'm like, whoa, so if he can zoom in, there is a car on the road out there in the distance.
It's about one car.
This road is down to about a one lane road. Just the first road.
Yeah, sorry. Can I, can I speak to this, guys? Yeah, so we brought this to the board, I put together a cost estimate and some options, um, at that time, I think the decision made from the board was that we weren't going to do. A separate roadway project, and that Troy and I would look into maybe the classy patching program.
Excellent.
Yeah. If you, we went, we went out for bid for the classy patching program last year, and we did not get any bids.
The reason why I'm bringing this up is because there wasn't a photo attached with it, and I want everybody to know exactly what it looks like right now. And there are houses in the very back connected to this, are under us, and for me. I know there's only maybe what, five houses or whatever back there, but if an ambulance or fire truck needs to get to them. This is at the point of being a safety hazard, I'm not saying we need to do anything this year, but we probably should be putting this in a five year plan.
So we're gonna be, we're working on, you guys approved, um.
Yes.
A capital improvements plan.
Right.
Uh, or what, what we'll be proposing, um, that, but we'll, we'll be working on one. This is absolutely a project that we will, we will be including.
I just wanted everybody to see more cars on that road than you would think.
Yeah.
It's a cut through.
It's a cut through for kids, they speed on that road.
It's a cut through.
I haven't done some years of that one.
Yeah, the, yeah, the jurisdiction, the jurisdiction does change, um, when the, the road hits the, the curve, and actually maybe just north of the water tower, I guess.
Yeah.
East of the water tower, um, I'm, I can't, I'm getting my directions back. Near, near the water tower, so the jurisdiction does change, so yeah, I mean, if we're going to advance any large scale improvements of that, um. I would recommend that we reach out to the Rockton, I believe it's the township, and maybe the village of Rockton, don't, don't quote me on that, but. I mean, if that's something.
Sure.
That you want to bring, I can refresh some cost estimates and, and bring that back, but that's.
I, the, the point of this isn't to say we need to do something right now, and I'm not asking to.
Yeah.
Move this forward right now, I just wanted everybody to have a visual of what it actually looked like. Because I know during that conversation, it's like, oh, well, there's only five roads, but nobody's visual, visualizing how bad it is, right?
More importantly, fixing that railroad track crossing right before you get to that, because every single day across that thing. And it was a nightmare, I've never been on that road, I see that all the time, I see people walking up and down there, but fix Ox Point or that railroad crossing.
We will address all of these in our capital improvement plan and establish.
Can we just do that tonight, Carol?
Sure.
Rail take care of that for us right away.
Uh, we'll let you get on the phone with the, um, rail lady.
Yeah.
For the next six years.
Yeah, they're in India.
I wanted, can we go through the change of.
Oh.
Trustee's and how we're gonna change over and what that looks like.
So two guys, I would like to, the previous, last time we did, we had sworn in at the board meeting, just the new, or the new board. Other times we've done a switch over.
The statute says.
To you.
The statute says.
That she says you've sworn in at that first meeting after we give the certifications back, so.
So do we start the meeting like we used to, where the old board does old business, the new board takes over and does new business? They get sworn in in between?
Make a motion, how would you like to do it, it's not my call, you guys can, however you wanna do it.
I think it's for you guys that are running, I mean, you know, here's the thing, I mean, whatever happens is gonna happen, and however you feel about it, the, when we came in. You guys. I'm sort of scorched earth, so.
Well, I, I, I think, just going back to how we used to do it is a respectful way, we can actually say congratulations if that's the case, or. Yeah, but that allows us to finish our old business, we can respectfully. You know, send Sue off, she's not running, so.
Uh, we're busy.
So, come to one more, so we can.
Okay, well, speaking of that.
And what do we say now?
This would be, so.
Yes, I want that, okay, that's my motion.
They call it.
Yes, speaking was. Also, while we decide that, can, can we let Sue close this meeting off?
Oh, thank you.
Can you say the?
How great.
Career, we got about a half a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you make the motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
This is our next one, we need this one now, I guess.
Yeah, we'll get your ticket back.
We have recognition, yes, in case. Vacation, public service, two thousand nine to twenty twenty five.
Yeah, there'll be people later.
I'm very flattered.
We can officially give that.
Get to take a look at it, a picture.
No fingerprints.
Sue, and we hope you come to every meeting and make a comment publicly.
Are you, are you at next meeting soon, maybe?
Well.
Yes.
I wasn't sure, that's why we were, we're gonna hold off, but.
Thanks.
Do you want me to hand sanitizer a little?
I'm gonna do this.
Yeah, we'll do it later, just quick.
There we go.
Any words of wisdom for Sue, anything you wanna share with us?
Yes.
So, help us become.
Plugging away.
Coming to meetings.
Doing your homework.
Your motion.
How you do with motions, we chair.
Someone.
Second, second, motion by trustee Patty, second by trustee.
Very nice.
Roll call.
Babcock?
Yes.
Maliko?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Patty? Yes.
Guys? Uh, eighty forty five.
I think you meant to yawn.